I want to welcome everybody here tonight. I'm going to call the meeting to order. I suggest anybody with any cell phones, please put them on vibrate, please, if you do. But is there any conflict of interest amongst council members here tonight? Seeing none? Adoption of the published agenda? I need a mover, please. Councillor Bjorkman and Councillor Garan. I need an addition here by Rob.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Just one small amendment. Item 8.7 on the Agenda bylaw 1834. The title to the bylaw should read "Bylaw Number 1834 being a bylaw to amend 1350", not 350. So it should be "Bylaw Number 1834 being a bylaw to amend 1350".
Thank you, Rob. And I guess there's no public presentations tonight, so we'll move right on to reports from administration.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Just to go into adoption of minutes under item 5, that the minutes of the regular council meeting held August 6 be adopted as circulated?
Mover, please. Deputy Mayor Malasch and Seconder Councillor Bowman. Any questions? All in favor? It's Kerry.
Thank you. 8.1 under Reports is Economic Development Officers' Report 2019-08, re economic development website and marketing for receipt, and that council approved $30,000 in funding from the contingency reserve for projects related to economic development to cover the cost of the design and the implementation of the website and marketing activities.
Have a mover, please. Councillor Bjorkman and Councillor Vannden-Doe. Did you want to speak on this, Nelson, at all? Nothing further? Okay, all in favor? It's Kerry. Oh, you got a question, Councillor Bondi?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to our Economic Development Officer. Will our Tourism Essex website be linked as well? Because I don't want to lose that because it's fabulous. If you could explain and expand a little bit on that. And I have one more question after that, too, please.
Go ahead, Nelson.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. No, we will not lose that website. Any items on the new website referring back to the tourism website will be linked. And same on the new corporate site as well. So if there's any information about tourism, beaches, wineries, trails, stuff like that, that'll all go back and be linked to the tourism website as well. So it's all interconnected.
Thank you, Nelson. Any other questions? All in favor? It's Kerry.
8.2, Economic Development, 2019-09, re Downtown Walkabout, 2019, providing an update to council. This report is for receipt.
Have a mover, please, through Councillor Bowman and Councillor Verbeek. Any questions on this one? Councillor Bondi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to our Economic Development Officer, Nelson Silveira, again. I think this is a really good activity that we do, the walk around. And I know that something came up a couple of years ago was wayfinding signage, I believe about a year ago. And I'm just wondering, because that pairs together with our walkabouts, if there's anything coming with that grant? We got a grant for like $50,000, and 18 was going to go to Harrow and 18 to Essex Center and 9 and 9, I think, something like that. Just wondering if there's an update about that, because I get asked about that as well.
Nelson, if you can answer that, please.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. Administration's currently working on something. Hopefully roll out shortly. It's just the logistics of actually where signs go. But the rest of that funding from the Main Street Revitalization Fund that you're talking about, that $50,000, about $18,000 went to planters in the downtown centers, so all evenly spread out. And then we're going to be using the rest of that funding for implementing wayfinding signage. So we're working on that right now.
Any other questions? All in favor? It's Kerry.
8.3, Community Services, 2019-32, Special Events Resource Team update for September for receipt.
Have a mover, please. Councillor Garan, Seconder. Councillor Verbeek. Any questions on this one? Councillor Bondi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, perhaps to our Director of Community Services, Mr. Sweet. Just wondering if we can add, after the Harrow Fair Parade for the next workday, if we can add to the CERT review of garbages. I walked around downtown Harrow, and I know it's maybe not a big deal, but when you're walking down the street, the garbages were like overflowing today. And I was like, no, we can't wait till Friday. And thank goodness, town staff did go out and clean. But I think it's something to keep our town clean. And so many people come in from the parade and are using the garbages, which is a good thing, but they just needed, they need to be emptied the first workday after the...
Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor? It's Kerry.
8.4, Building Report, 2019-07, July 2019, Building Report, together with the Development Overview for July as well. And this report is for receipt by council this evening.
Have a mover, please. Councillor Bjorkman, Seconder. Councillor Verbeek. Any questions on this one? Nothing? Okay. I have a question to Jeff. Out of the subdivisions in the north and the south, I think the public should know which ones are really hot and are going to go.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The Jicanis subdivision in Essex is ongoing right now. It's serviced and houses are under construction, so it's basically on its own now. The other proposals that we have would be the Woodview Estates subdivision expansion, and that's currently being reviewed by Urca as part of an environmental impact assessment. In Harrow, you have a subdivision on Queen Street, the Delabana subdivision, which is pretty much ready to go at their discretion. So basically, it's in their ballpark now. And then we've got the subdivision on Erie Street, south of Harrowood, which is in the process of going for the regular draft plan approvals.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other questions? Councillor Vannden-Doe.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. Is the Delabana, is the environmental work done on that proposed subdivision?
Environmental work is done. Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor? It's Kerry. Thank you.
8.5 is Building, 2019-07, sorry, 8.5 is Finance and Business Services, 2019-05, re External Audit Services Extension for receipt, and that council awards the one-year extension to BDO Canada LLP in the amount of $36,952, and that includes HST.
Have a mover, please. Councillor Vannden-Doe and Councillor Bowman. Any questions? All in favor? It's Kerry.
8.6, Clerks' Report, 2019-23, re Quarter Revision for the South Mulden Road Drain, and this is together with bylaw 1849 to provide for the South Mulden Road Drain for provisional reading, two readings this evening. That Clerks' Report, that said report be received, that Dan Buigro and Kirk Carter from the Drainage Board be appointed to sit as members at the Quarter Revision on October 7 at 5:00 p.m., and that bylaw 1849 accordingly receive two readings this evening.
I need a mover, please. Mover? Deputy Mayor Malasch and Councillor Bjorkman. Any questions? All in favor of this one? Thank you.
8.7 is Planning Report, 2019-44, re amendments to the Town of Essex Sign Bylaw. And this is in conjunction with bylaw 1834 being a bylaw to amend 1350, which is the general bylaw for signs in the Town of Essex. One thing to note to council is this bylaw as drafted is receiving two readings this evening, but certainly if council so wishes, they could give three readings to this. As I understand, the requisite public meeting was already held. Obviously, if council does give three readings this evening, then it would take effect this evening, but it would still be pending short-form wording coming back.
I just want to ask questions, council question. Are you willing to go to the three readings tonight? Can I see a show of hands if we are? Okay, we'll move that. Okay, so I need a mover on this. Keep moving. And a Seconder, please, Councillor Verbeek, and a question for Councillor Bjork. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to Mr. Watson. So the wording of the bylaws is just in regard to taking down the old signs within a certain amount of time. We did, had some discussion about funds and CIP funds and that sort of thing working towards it. So I would expect that you are not mentioning that because the agreement was it states in the CIP that those funds are available toward that, so that funding model doesn't need to be in the bylaw. Would that be correct?
Through, Mr. Mayor, it is correct that the CIP funding does make provision for sign replacement and abandonment, but we'll be reporting to council on changes to the CIP program, so we'll deal with that as part of that package to council.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor? It's Kerry. Thank you.
8.8 is Planning, 2019-45, reassessable parking provisions in the general zoning bylaw. And once again, this is together with bylaw 1848 to amend 1037, the comprehensive zoning bylaw. And through you, Mr. Chair, same thing as the prior report, the bylaw as drafted provides for two readings, but certainly if it's council's wish, they could give three readings this evening.
Thank you. Once again, I'll ask council if they're willing to go the third reading tonight. Can I see a show of hands, please? Okay. I need a mover, then. Could I have a mover, please? Councillor Bowman and Councillor Garan. All in favor? It's Kerry. Thank you.
8.9 is Planning, 2019-47, re Essex Town Center Part-Lot Control Exemption Application. And this is together with bylaw 1847 to provide that part lot control shall not apply to the land so identified for receipt, and that council authorizes part lot control exemption to permit the development of the first phase of the Essex Town Center subdivision, and also that the manager of planning services for the County of Essex be so advised. And finally, that bylaw 1847 receive two readings this evening and be provisionally adopted.
Thank you. Could I have a mover, please? Need a mover? Councillor Bjorkman and Councillor Verbeek. Any questions? Councillor Bjorkman.
Thank you. Through your worship, again to Mr. Watson and maybe to Ms. Chadwick. We agreed when we were doing the site plan, there was a certain number of lots that were going to be allowed to develop. And in reading this, it says we've kind of expanded that to fit the blocks because we're doing it in blocks. So just wondering, like, how much more development are we approving tonight compared to what we were talking about at the start?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. You're actually not approving any more development. The complication was that back in January, council approved a part lot control exemption bylaw for Essex Town Center, but it was for blocks and parts of blocks, because this subdivision is actually divided into blocks, not into individual lots. And so Phase 1 was actually a combination of some blocks and parts of blocks. The problem was the registrar would not accept that, and we had to go back. The registrar basically has said that only blocks can be exempted. So this bylaw does exempt a larger area than what Phase 1 is. However, the property is also in a holding zone, which means that development can't proceed without removal of the hold, and will only remove the hold by bylaw of council for the actual Phase 1, blocks and parts of blocks, because that doesn't have to go to the registrar.
Other questions? All in favor? It's Kerry. Thank you.
Item 9, any reports from our youth members of council this evening?
Ava? Anything?
No, I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
I have nothing new to report, Mr. Mayor.
Item 10, any updates concerning county council?
Have you, have you got anything, Deputy Mayor Malasch?
Thank you through your worship. If anyone's interested in knowing how the county is going to spend the extra money that we all received as innovation grant, they're going to be spending their money, and this is going to be up for discussion tomorrow night on traffic controls. So all of the streetlights, not streetlights, traffic lights that we have under the county control will be looked at to go wireless, to have better control of traffic situations. And, you know, if one park gets congested, they'll be able to control the lights better and have them go longer or shorter. This may be to an advantage because I know that, I don't know if there have been other councillors who have had complaints about Manning and Number 3 Highway, but that's one intersection that I've had a lot of complaints about, where the light turns too quickly sometimes. It's triggered by people not coming through right at a certain time. If they don't go through the intersection within, I think it's within 10 seconds or eight seconds, and there's traffic at the other opposing lights, to go through the light will switch right away. Whereas there may be a slow vehicle coming up to that intersection with 20 cars behind it and so on. But they're saying that this will be able to look down the highway, try and figure out whether or not the light needs to change that quick. But in any case, they're saying that this will, this will gear us up for the 20th century, 21st century as far as traffic controls go. But if anybody's interested, that debate will go on tomorrow night. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any other questions? All in favor? It's Kerry.
Item 11.1, Correspondence to be Received. That the correspondence listed in Agenda item 11.1 be received?
Want to do them all? Yeah, you can do them on consent? Yeah. I guess we'll do them all. If anybody has any questions on any of them? Move it. A Seconder, Councillor Bowman. Before we go to vote, I just want to talk about the FragMities that was brought up at the AMO conference. Okay? And they are trying right now a chemical. I asked the CEO, do you know where, do you remember where that's being tried?
Around the London area.
Yeah, around the London area. They're trying it. In the U.S., they have a product out now. I don't know if it's a similar product or not, but they're trying it. So just give the public an update. They are doing something about FragMities, so hopefully we can defeat that product, that weed. So any other questions? Councillor Bondi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't really know who I'm addressing this to, probably everybody. The AMO letter, there's a letter on our agenda that talks about some of the announcements from the recent conference and some of the downloading concerns, downloading, you know, childcare starting 2020, looking at public health, looking at the conservation authorities. And I wasn't able to attend AMO this year, but I'm just wondering if council members that have more insight or our CEO that has more insight, there was a little article in the Harrow News about AMO, and there was, you know, our CEO did send a brief email, but there's some big issues that seem to be coming. And I just don't know if we're going to roundtable about them at all at any point. I mean, we can discuss it here, but that's not necessary. I'm just wondering if our staff and our fellow councillors are going to talk about how these things are going to impact us, because it looks like some things are coming and they're going to impact us greatly.
Councillor Bondi, I brought that issue up this morning to administration, and there is going to be a report that comes back. CEO, you know roughly when that report will be ready for the next meeting?
Through your worship, Councillor Bondi, I think typically in the past, the councillors that have attended AMO have come back and presented their findings and their dealings. I think because we've had four of us there, I was looking to, in discussion with the mayor today, get together with those four councillors and maybe group effort, group discussion on our presentation, on what we saw, what we received, you know, not just on paper, but also the backroom conversations with respect to ministers and how they felt they were read, our delegation meeting. So that depends on when we can all get together as a group, but yeah, something coming back. I was looking at to touch on more of the discussions we had with ministers and some of those high-level, I guess, meetings that we had. The particular points you brought up today might not be part of that, but that's something that we're always in line with and in tune with on how those things are going to affect our municipality. So if there's some things in there we can touch on, we will. I'm just not sure it's going to address everything that you talked about, Councillor Bondi, because some of those were announcements made the last day in question and answer periods. Some of those were, you know, it wasn't necessarily a formal prescriptive kind of announcement. So, but by all means, we'll come back, I think, as a council and let you guys know how we did there and inform the public as well.
Thank you, Chris. Just to add to that, there was a lot of announcements made at AMO. Some of them were very good. For example, hospitals, when Ford spoke, he said that they were going to put more money into hospitals, the existing hospitals, upgrade them, and putting more money into new hospitals. So that was great. And into recreational areas, like our land that we bought on the other side of the Highway 3, there's more money coming out for that type of project, too. So there was some good announcements made, and there was some made that, you know, we didn't really agree with. So, but anyways, we'll have more to report the next meeting.
Go ahead, councillor. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to, the Dog Pound had a meeting, and I just wanted to, in 30 seconds, give council an update. There's some capital costs coming through as per an inspection. We have to work on ventilation and accessibility issues there, so we're spending $20,000 that we had in our capital budget. Administration in Lake Shore is also including some of that, so they're, they want all of us feeder municipalities to pick up some of their admin costs. They're also looking at the impound fees of $11 a day. Right now, if your dog goes to the Dog Pound and it stays there three days, you only pay $11 a day. Like, you know, if you want to go on away on vacation, it's like drop your dog off and pick it up in three days, because you can't get better, not better care, but you can't get care for $11 a day. So I just wanted to say that right now, currently, the Dog Pound is also going through a visioning session, so if anybody has any comments to bring forward, the agenda's there, read it, and if you have anything, you can email myself or our clerk, and we can send it off to Lake Shore.
11.2.1 on the agenda, that the correspondence from Joseph Lucas express an interest in becoming a member of the Heritage Committee be received and supported, and that Mr. Lucas be so advised.
Have a mover, please, Councillor Bjorkman and Councillor Garan. All in favor? It's Kerry. Thank you. And we'll welcome Joe to the committee.
Item 12, Committee Meeting Minutes, that the minutes listed in Agenda item 12, together with any recommendations noted, be received, approved, and adopted as circulated.
Mover, please, on the committee meetings, Deputy Mayor Malasch, Seconder. Councillor Vannden-Doe. Any questions on any of these? All in favor? It's Kerry. Thank you.
13.1 under Financial is the 2019 Operating Expense Budget Variance Report for the month ending July 31 for receipt this evening by council.
Have a mover, please. Mover? Councillor Garan and a Seconder, Councillor Vannden-Doe. Any questions? Jeff, did you have anything to add to that? All in favor? It's Kerry. Thank you.
13.2, also under Financial, is the 2020 Budget Initiation Memo for receipt this evening by council. But I, through you, Mr. Chair, I believe our Director of Corporate Services would like to speak to council on this point.
Good. Go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you. Through the chair. So it's an exciting time as we enter the 2020 to 21, 24 budget forecast and budget. That's a mouthful. I'm looking for a little bit of direction. Historically, under the old council, we built in 2% increase. Is that still palatable with this council, or would you prefer it to be 20, maybe 1, 2, 2.5? It's, I don't know if you've given it any thought. I'm kind of springing it upon you, but is there any direction on an increase that you guys would like to see for 2020 to be built into the budget?
That's it, Jeff. Thank you. Council, Councillor Vannden-Doe.
Through you, Mr. Chair. First, I think we should have some kind of rough idea as to what the cost pressures are going to be next year, what percentage, I mean, you know, just ballpark. And then perhaps what new tax rule additions will do for us, because that'll be a percent or two, I'm sure. And then when we've got some of those, perhaps we can ballpark where we want to be, see what variables we have. Thank you.
Councillor Bondi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would say that 2% is almost at the point where it's not acceptable to our residents because it's being paired with the MPAC increases. And I know that we've always kind of stuck around the 2%, and we've liked it and we've done well, but during this last election, I really heard on the doorsteps that tax increases are a big deal. And for me, I agree with Councillor Vannden-Doe in that we need to have some of those, let's see what our wants and our needs are. And I'm trying to, this is the strategic planning document that's all printed off, and it's really small, and it's really hard to read, but I'm trying to make my way through this, too, because I feel like, excuse me, the strategic plan is a big part of it, because there could be a whole lot of our residents that are really happy paying a 2%, and there could be, you know, a whole lot that aren't. So it's hard to say. Personally, I would say like a 1.5% if I was going to give you a number. Definitely not higher than 2%. And I think once our residents see that we have a really solid plan, which we don't have yet, we don't have a strategic plan yet, and I'm really anxious about that. So once we have that, then we can sell it, say, you know, hey, McGregor, you're going to get this, and Harrow Center, you're going to get this, and then we can justify it, because right now, I feel like we're spinning our wheels without that plan.
Thank you. Any other questions? Deputy Mayor Malasch.
Just my general comment or feeling on where we should be, I would say that we aim for 0%. And then once we get to the table, then we decide, do we want to go higher than 0%? So if we want to go to 1% at that point in time, we've got projects, we debate on which projects we're actually going to do. If we look at all the projects that are listed and we go, you know what, none of these are really necessary, we don't, we find it at this point in time, we just want to stay at the 0%, then that's where we stay. But I think that we should be aiming for the 0% and then coming up if we need to come up at budget deliberations, rather than just jumping into it right now and saying we want to see a 2% or a 3% or 1.5% or 1%, 0%. And I don't think there's anybody that would be unhappy with a 0% unless they see that we have to cut back on services like snow plowing or, you know, timeliness as far as when our people get out to clean up a mess that's going on, or, you know, water breaks or in the water lines or something like that. So I think, in my opinion, that's what we should be aiming for immediately and then working our way up if we need to after that.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Jeff, you...
Through the chair. To provide a little clarification also, this isn't locking you into anything, it's just getting the general direction. I appreciate the comments on that. I have all that information, so I can report back and give you some insight into kind of economic trends and what funding looks like and potential impacts, that we do have that. Councillor Bondi, you are correct, there's also the assessment growth. There's the assessment growth and then the additional revenue related to increases in assessment. So this is the last year of the revenue cycle. This is the last year that municipalities will potentially be able to collect on that because according to MPAC, last time we talked, it was average assessments were going up approximately 40%. So you'll have to build that into your models moving forward. So, thanks.
Thank you. Jeff, any other questions? I would just like, I would like to add one thing. I have had lots and lots, lots, who want to talk? Did you? No. I had a lot of people come up to me already and very concerned about roads. So, you know, we're looking at roads and infrastructures, so I'm saying if we're, if we're looking, it's nice, it's nice to have a 0% increase. Beautiful if we could be there. There's no question about it. But what I, the feedback I'm getting from the public is this, if it's a percent, percent and a half, 2%, as long as they can see, you know, results in roads and drainage and, you know, we have to keep up with the roads, you know? If we continue to let them go, there's a lot of roads out there right now that need to lift badly, we're going to lose them. So in the long run, it's going to cost more money. So this is what we got to look at when it comes to budget time. So just to run that past council and to the public. Councillor Vannden-Doe.
Mr. Mayor, I agree with what you just said, but I also agree with the Deputy Mayor, I think...
I think 0 is what we should aim for, even if we plan to do what you're saying and spend extra on roads, we should be the ones deciding where that 1 or 2% is, not administration. I think administration should give us the 0 first, and then if we decide to go up from there, then we make that decision.
No, I agree 100%, councillor. Any other questions? All in favor? It's Kerry. Want to speak more, Jeff? Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Through the chair. Based on feedback in the 2019 budget process, we also extended the period from when the document will be delivered to council. We have just November 29th on there, and that'll give you 10 days prior to the first meeting. And the first meeting will just be an information session where you can sit down, have a conversation, and walk through the document. And then you'll have it over the duration of Christmas until the New Year, with feedback required by January 13th, so we can build that into the document and get any answers to those questions, and then we will begin budget deliberations in mid-January.
I already had a vote, so.
Item 15.1, under notices of motion, the following notices of motion were first presented at the August 6 regular council meeting and are being brought forward for consideration at this evening's meeting. 15.1.1, that council have a discussion about tightening the policy on proxy voting and fixing the use of corporate resource bylaw and sign bylaw, as moved by councillor Bondi and would need a seconder.
Need a seconder? Councillor Bjorkman. All in favor? Go ahead. A discussion on it?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's pretty straightforward. Routinely, we update our bylaws, we just updated some sign bylaws that we had from 2010. As we get new information and things change, we review what we have and we update it. And I think it'll benefit elections going forward, and I think it'll make it a little bit easier for our staff to enforce, perhaps having penalties for some of our bylaws, or just giving them more teeth, making them more enforceable. So, it's basically easy. I don't see, you know, why council wouldn't want to investigate this, or give it to our administration, give them formal direction and say, hey, can we look at this, and where can we make improvements? And I realize that it's not always going to be, it's not going to come back perfect, but I think we can do just a little better here.
Go ahead, Chris.
Through your worship, yeah, as administration has advised council already, that's something that we conduct a review following every election, and we'll come back with, I would consider them, as councillor Bondi noted, maybe improvements and enhancements. I think the word fixing maybe denotes that things are broken, but definitely we'll come back and look at proposed bylaw and policy changes, and that'll come back in a report to council sometime this fall.
Any other questions? Councillor Bjorkman.
Thank you, sir. I think one thing as a friendly amendment to this motion is that we should remove the proxy voting from this amendment, from this notice, that there's still an ongoing investigation. That should not be part of anything we're discussing until that's done. As far as the other parts of this and the resources, the sign bylaws, that should be no problem, but we shouldn't, we should remove that if the mover is good with just taking that statement out.
Thank you, councillor. Any other questions? Councillor Bowman.
Just a couple of comments on this. I would think it should not be the council that's doing the digging on this, it should be administration, because if council is doing it, it looks more like the players are setting the rules for the game, where if it's coming for administration, then it's the officials setting the regulations for the game. And I just think it has a better perspective from all concerned. I don't disagree that it should be looked at periodically, and, I mean, tonight is as good a time as any, but as far as the council actually, how should I say, controlling the mechanism of it, I don't think that should happen. I would like to see that it's a, or the administration to come back with the report in time for adjustments to be made before the next election. And I think that would, what would accomplish what we're trying to do and make it sort of smooth.
Rob?
Just through you, Mr. Chair, and following up on councillor Bowman's comments, that's definitely the intention here. These proposed reforms or changes that we're looking as far as election policies, procedures, bylaws, that would be coming from the clerk's office, and the clerk's responsibility is the general election. But certainly, and I think to the motion this evening, certainly if council has additional feedback, that's something that administration would receive. We've certainly taken note of and received and are aware of some of the concerns that were raised in the last election. So, that's all part of the review that we're conducting right now. And yes, the intention would be to come back with a report. We've committed to council to coming back with a report with proposed reforms, if any, looking to come back in the early fall.
Thank you, Rob. Deputy Mayor Milash.
Thank you. Through you, your worship. I'm of the consensus of what councillor Bowman is speaking of. I think I'd like to see what administration come back. There's no harm in any of us making some suggestions, but that doesn't have to actually be a discussion. We can, the discussion will come when the report comes back from administration. Based on what our CAO is saying, I would say that I'm willing to wait for that report to decide what we want to change, and hopefully by that time, our proxy issue will be resolved, the investigation, and we can discuss everything all at once. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Councillor Van der Dolen.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I agree with parts of what everyone has said, but I agree we need to wait for administration's report, but I think the more important report to wait for is the OPP report. I mean, that's the elephant in the room, that's what we need. I mean, earlier we were talking about budget numbers and what we're going to do, and we wouldn't think of debating the budget before we actually have the budget report in front of us. And I don't think we can discuss any of these election issues or alleged issues until we have both those reports. Administration's suggestions, probably based on whatever it is the OPP say. And I think we should, like, yeah, we could split proxy off from the signs and bylaws, but if you go through the list of complaints that were made to administration during the election, as a couple of us have done over the past few weeks, they're all of a piece, they're all together. It's the same few people that have complained about this sign and that sign and this proxy and that. So, splitting it up doesn't seem to make sense, and separating it from having the reports doesn't seem to make sense. Why don't we just postpone it until the OPP report comes out, and then administration could give their recommendations? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Garen.
Through you, your worship. I think we have to separate them. The police report could take three more years before we get it, and I'd like to have this done in the fall. The bylaws that were set in misplace, we can deal with. I think the report has come back, has to be black and white, what the penalties are going to be, how it's going to be enforced, those are the two biggest concerns I have. But I agree with councillor Bondi. I think we can deal with that separate, and we can deal with the proxy when we can.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Verbeek.
Sure, thank you. Through you, your worship. I've had several conversations with many of us around the table about this. I will be supporting the motion, but, I mean, administration is already moving forward with this. I think that we just, we wait for administration to come back. I do agree with Mr. Garen about, like, we can't wait any, who would have thought that this proxy would take eight months for the OPP? We can't just put everything on hold until this report comes back. I just think we see what Robert and his staff come back with in the early fall.
Good. Thank you, councillor. Anybody else? I can say one thing, and I'll say it, I'll say it now. This whole thing got overblown. There was a handful of complaints, that's all there was, and I'll leave it at that. I'll, pardon me?
May I ask for a recorded vote, Mr. Mayor?
Yep. Okay. Deputy Mayor Milash.
Yeah, yeah, and through you, Mr. Chair. Councillor Bondi, could you restate your amended motion?
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Just that council give direction for administration to review the election bylaws and policies and come back with a report.
Deputy Mayor Milash. Councillor Garen. Oh, pardon me. Well, recorded vote, okay. Okay, councillor, or Deputy Mayor Milash, if you'd sit in favor.
Yep, yep. So, on the question before council, councillor Bondi, how do you vote?
Pardon.
Councillor Van der Dolen?
Read it again, please.
Yep. That council, that council direct administration to have a review of election policies, including the use of corporate resource bylaw and sign bylaw?
Support.
Councillor Bowman?
Support.
Mayor Snively?
Support.
Deputy Mayor Milash?
Support.
Councillor Garen?
Support.
And councillor Bjorkman?
Councillor Verbeek?
Oh, I'm sorry, my apologies. Councillor Verbeek?
Support.
And councillor Bjorkman?
Support.
Support. So, with a recorded vote of eight in favor, the motion passes. Thank you.
15.1.2 is also a notice of motion that was originally presented at the August 6 meeting, and is also being brought forward for consideration this evening. That council give direction to the Town of Essex Animal Control Officer that until a policy issue can be addressed by the Dog Pound Committee, that any animal running at large that is apprehended by Animal Control and in need of medical attention, the Animal Control Officer be authorized to release the animal to the owners or deliver it to the veterinarian within a reasonable time, provided the owners are willing to cover the costs of the vet fees. This is as moved by councillor Bondi and would need a seconder.
Need a seconder, please? Deputy Mayor Milash, with a question. Thank you. So. You're seconded with a question? Yep. Okay. Thank you. So, my question would be, and I'm going to direct it to councillor Bondi, because she seems to know a lot about this since she's on our committee for this, and councillor Bondi, so right now, they're not allowed to do, to have this happen, then, I take it?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, a couple of weeks ago, the Dog Pound Committee had a meeting, and one of the concerns brought forward was there was a pregnant dog running around in La Salle. It ran away from home, actually, because it was in labor. It went to the, it went to the Lake Shore Dog Pound. The owners were frantic. The Lake Shore Dog Pound Animal Control Officer was following the policy, not letting the dog leave the pound. The dog had its puppies in the pound. The puppies made their way out the little trough when we're in the, you know, the urine trough overnight, and had those puppies lived, but had it, they died, and the Dog Pound in each respective town not protect themselves, it could have been a media frenzy. So, it's just, this is the motion, this is the Town of Lake Shore's motion, it's not our motion. So, each, from the Dog Pound Committee, each member was supposed to bring it back to their town to pass it, to tighten up that little glitch in the bylaws, if that makes sense.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to just explain, sir. Thank you. Any other questions from council? All in favor? Kerry. I have the report.
One more here.
Yeah.
15.2 on the agenda is a notice of motion that is being presented for the first time this evening and will be brought forward for council's consideration at the September 16th meeting. That council have a public, sorry, councillor Bondi, notice of motion that council have a public discussion at its regular council meeting about continued concerns with the 8th concession in Gore Road, including water puddling and damage. Item 16, any reports and announcements from council members this evening?
Deputy Mayor Milash.
Thank you, through your worship. I just want to mention that I'll have more details for everyone, but the mug run at McGregor Coen Park is coming up on September 21st. Our next council meeting will be very close to that date, so I just want to give everybody an opportunity to mark it into their calendars right now, three weeks in advance. It's a 5K and 10K run or walk. The money, I'm not sure what the cause is this year, but I know that it's quite typically a local cause, the monies that the monies go to, anything that they raise. There's also a Saturday, September the 21st, that evening, that's a beer festival, and they usually have about anywhere from eight or nine or 10 different craft beer vendors, as well as food vendors, and a couple of different bands. And I know that I've been there a couple of times and even questioned if I was actually in the County of Essex. I thought maybe I was downtown Toronto somewhere at a party. So, it's worthwhile going, and helps out, like I said, they donate the money to local causes. Thanks.
Councillor Garen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Essex Firemen Association's Dinner and Dance is this Saturday, is at the Essex Recreation Complex, it's a high school. Tickets are $30, and you can get them at the Essex Fire and Rescue Station 1. They'll have Just Jeff's Air Catering, Motor City Drive Entertainment, and yours truly, I have his dancing shoes on, so anyone who wants to come out and party it up, I'll be there.
Thank you. Councillor Verbeek.
Thank you. Through you, your worship. So, last week, the mayor, myself, and Doug Sweet, we're at our joint detachment police breakfast, police service board breakfast, and, you know, there was a number of good things, but one of the, two of the speakers were from the cyber, the cyber policing unit, and again, Essex was mentioned as being, you know, ahead of the curve with, by already having purchased our cyber insurance, because they're saying that there are, have been multiple municipalities that have been under, that have been attacked cyberly, and they're advising all to purchase this, and it was just kind of neat that we were at it. And we also spoke about the amalgamation coming sooner rather than later for all OPP detachments that have more than one police service under them.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Bjorkman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to recap a little bit the last couple of weeks, out in Colchester, tremendous events. We had the movie in the park, it was really well-attended. There was hundreds of people that were there, which was followed by the fireworks that were finally able to set off from the Colchester Family Fun Day. It was a great evening, there were tons of people out there. The Colchester Park, Tune Up the Parks music series has been great the last couple of weeks, with lots of people using it, and just tremendous comments on our waterfront right now with the new ramp, the use of that ramp, watching families use that all day long on the weekends has been tremendous. It was really a worthwhile project, and it's, people mention it to us all the time, they really enjoy it, so a lot of really great things happening down in Colchester Park.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Bondi? Councillor Van der Dolen?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to remark that how happy I am to see the next phase of the bike paths going in on County Road 50. That was the first vote I was part of as a newly-elected councillor last fall, and I was a little bit suspicious of it compared to other priorities, but it's a very popular thing, and a lot of people are really happy to see it going ahead. But I would like to ask through the chair of staff, we were a little bit vague last fall, we committed the 1.5 million to finish it all the way to the Arner Town Line. Are we doing half of it this year, or are we doing all of it? Because last year, we weren't sure how much of it was going to be done this year.
All of it.
Fine.
Yep. Yep, all of it, councillor.
All of it's being done.
Yep.
Excellent, thank you. Because the way it looks now, it appears as though they've done one quarter of the total distance on both sides between the farm wagon there.
Right.
And the Arner Town Line, they've got one quarter dug out and pre-paved the lower stratum. So, I figured that was halfway, that they were going to do half, so 100% is excellent. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, councillor. Councillor Bowman?
Yes, just like to congratulate the Herro Fair Board on another great fair weekend. Yes, just like to congratulate the Herro Fair Board on another great fair weekend. Obviously, most of us were down there tromping around on Saturday and the crowd was fantastic. So again, congratulations to them and hopefully have another few hundred years to go.
Thank you, councillor. I just have one thing. Councillor Vannendall and myself attended the Cedarwind 50th anniversary. Congratulations to them, the Boy Scouts, it was a great event. They do a lot for, for the young people and it, it just seems like it's getting bigger and bigger and, and you know, it really, really gives these kids a chance to see what nature's all about and out in the country, these, a lot of kids from the city come out and, and it's great. It was, was a great event. The second thing I want to talk, talk about, I had a great visit with the mayor from Chatham and just to let the public know and, and the media, we talked about shoreline protection. And I'm going to bring it up tomorrow at county, at the county level, under new business. I, I would like all us mayors to get together in our municipality, Drew Dilkins from the city of Windsor, and see if we can pressure, pressure our senior levels of government. I know they're talking about shoreline protection, but I think we need a force. We need a force to drive, drive it into them how important it is. So we are losing a lot, a lot of frontage. If, just in our area alone, if you go along in front of Kubota Park, you can see hundreds of feet of property in the last few years gone. So this is the time where I think we have to form a strong force to, to pressure, to pressure senior, senior levels of government to put some funding into the area. There's got to be some programs. I know Jeff is working on something for our residents here, which is going to be good and, but, you know, you can't expect, for example, a farmer that has 200 or 300 feet of frontage, how is he going to come up with all that money to save that front? So I, I think, I think we have to pressure the senior levels of government. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Item 17, bylaws. 1837 to provide for the West Town Line Drain New Bridge for third reading this evening.
Need a mover? Councillor Bjorkman and councillor Bowman. All in favor? Kerry.
1844 to confirm the proceedings of the August 6, 2019 regular council meeting, also for third reading this evening.
Mover please, councillor Vannendall and deputy mayor Malasch. All in favor? Kerry, thank you.
And 1845 to confirm the proceedings of this September 3 regular council meeting for two readings tonight.
Mover please, councillor Bowman and deputy mayor Malasch. All in favor? Kerry. And I guess I need a mover for, to adjourn, please. Councillor Vannendall and councillor Garen. Thank you, everybody for coming out tonight. It was nice to see people interested in municipal politics tonight. It was great to see more people out here. Thank you very much.